Okay, looks like we got a few folks. Joining apologies for. For the delay. Is my, am I, oh, I think I'm getting a internet connection unstable. This is not a good sign.
That's what I was getting when I had my problems. Yeah.
Mary, oh, you passed.
Sorry, I passed it on. It's like a virus.
You did. It is. Okay, let me, let me see if I can close some things.
And I don't know if you can hear me, but sometimes if you shut off your video, it helps.
I may have to do that as a last resort. If that, if that's the case, I just wasn't sure how that would work with the some chairing and not having video, but totally it is what it is. So. Let me just, all right, see if this works. Is it any better? My, am I? Am I getting? Okay, great. All right. So just as a public, Lydia is unable to join us tonight, so I will be chairing the meeting this evening. As a preliminary matter, this is Natasha Rivera, Vice Chair of the School Committee. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on agenda. Are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade.
Yeah.
Brian Haas.
Here.
Wayne White. Wait, I'm sorry. I'm actually doing staff first. We're gonna.
Don't worry about it.
Okay.
Keep going.
All right, Wayne Wright.
Yep, you're.
Jeff Franti.
Here.
Charles LeBron. Hi. I think he's muted.
Here.
Great. Chris Kitchell. Muted as well.
I'm here.
Okay, Laura, and I apologize, Laura, I'm gonna mispronounce your last name. Do you want to, can you pronounce it for me?
Absolutely. It's Laura Monacino.
Thank you very much. David, is it, can you pronounce your last name again for me?
George Huff.
Huff, okay. Thank you very much. And I think that is all the staff. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mary Branley.
Here.
Hillary Griffith. Uh-oh, Hillary, can you hear me? Is it me? Am I frozen? I can't tell.
You're fine.
Okay, so Hillary is frozen in.
Oh, there you go. I'm here now.
Okay. Elizabeth Albada.
Here.
Natasha Rivera here, and Lydia Clancy is absent. Okay. Good evening. This open meeting of the school committee is being conducted remotely, consistent with legislation. An act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed by Governor Baker in June 16, 2021. This act includes an extension until April 1st, 2022, of the remote meeting provisions of Governor's March 12, 2020 executive order suspending. Certain provisions of the open meeting law under MGO Chapter 30A, Section 20. Public bodies are allowed to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded. That the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. For this meeting, the school committee is convening by telephone and video conference via Zoom technology, which has been posted publicly. And will feature public comments. Instructions through to submit public comments have been shared along with the agenda. This meeting and materials are posted along with the agenda. The meeting will be recorded. If anyone wishes to record, please identify yourself by raising your hand. And looks like nobody. Colleen, is that correct? All right, and now I will call the meeting to order via roll call vote. Mary Branley.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera, yes. Elizabeth Albada.
Yes.
Hillary Griffith. Hillary, did you say yes or?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Wonderful. All right, oh, sorry, now my. My agenda just froze. My apologies. Okay, we will get through today. Okay, citizens' comments. Colleen, there was one citizen comment, correct?
Yes, and I put it just now into the folder.
Okay, let me refresh. But thank you. Okay, so this comment is from Renee Lilly at 37 Brook Street, Maynard. First, I would like to thank Mr. Haas and Ms. Godet and the rest of the administrative team for the clear, consistent, and up-to-date communication during the pandemic. Our family has found them to be helpful, reassuring, and thoughtful. Question, has the district posted the Assistant Superintendent position? If so, can you give an update on the timeline? If not, can you please explain the plan going forward? It is my hope that you will post the position so that the district can continue to function effectively and continue to grow in its curriculum development. Thank you for taking my comment. So Brian, I know, I don't know if you wanna, you had, want to include this in your superintendent report, or if you wanted to mention now, but to you.
Either, as the comment recognized, we sent a communication today to staff and families. Letting them know that Assistant Superintendent Jennifer Godet took a position at another, at a neighboring district. We're sad to lose her. She's been a great educational leader for us for many years. And so what we've done in the meantime, because it is October, is not exactly prime hiring time for the world of education. We've distributed many of those tasks to within our leadership team. Under the, you know, in thinking about the distributive leadership model and building some internal capacity. And at the same time, really assessing what are our needs. So to the, the question, we have not posted that job yet. We're taking the next couple of months to continue to move forward in every way that we have planned. Distributing many of the tasks within the leadership team to really assess what do we need to do? And what position do we need to post? And then most likely around the first of the year, that's when we, we would consider posting for the position.
Okay. Thank you very much for that update. I know things are. In the works, and I appreciate the thought that you and everyone is putting into the timing of an applicant pool and how we can gather data to figure out what we can best support. The students' needs right now and whatever that position will entail. So more to come. Thank you. All right, so I don't think there's any other. Public comments that have come through. So I think we can move on to the next item on the agenda, which is urgent business. Brian, is there any urgent business?
No urgent business tonight.
Nice. Alrighty. No urgent business. All right, so moving on to Agenda Item 4, Action Items. I will ead the floor to Mr. Frante to introduce the new building team chairs.
Good evening. I invited the team chairs. Two are new and one, one's veteran, just so you can put a face to their name. Their position has just one goal on their job description. And I'm just gonna read it to you. To effectively coordinate the special ed process at the building level. Ensuring quality programming and compliance with federal and state special ed laws and regulations. But then there's a list underneath of performance responsibilities. It is a long list, and in addition to that list, these folks are involved in. Anything and everything at the school level. We're very fortunate to have them. So I'm just gonna have them introduce themselves. And then we can set them free, because I think there's a baseball game on tonight that folks might be interested in or other activities. But Laura, if you'd like to introduce yourself, please.
Absolutely. My name is Laura Monacino, and I am at Green Meadow, and I'm absolutely thrilled to be in Maynard. I come from Abington, so a relatively similarly sized district. I worked there for many years. And my tie to Maynard is really special. I lived in Maynard about 25 years ago, and my daughter was born when I was living in Maynard, so the connection is real. And my love for the town is very strong, and I'm just thrilled to be part of the community again in this capacity. So thank you all for having me. And I hope that I can guide the Special Ed Department at the Green Meadow very well for years to come.
All right, thank you, Laura. Mr. Kitchell.
Hi, everyone. I'm Chris Kitchell, and the Team Chair for the Fowler School for Grades 4 through 8. This is my fifth year with Maynard. And, you know, I've loved working for the Maynard School District, and I look forward to collaborating with all of you and, you know, making the Special Ed Department as strong and. As good as it can be for, for students and meeting the needs of all of our students.
And just to point out, they also are the Team Chair for any students out of district at their grade level as well. And Mr. Huff.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. My name is David Huff. I am the Special Education Team Chair at Maynard High School. Coming from, most recently, the Justice Resource Institute Special Education Program within. And very excited to be a part of the Maynard Team. I live very close, just over the line in Acton. Spend quite a bit of time in Maynard. It's a, it's a great community. I'm very, very happy to be able to. Support families and students in this position. And again, much like Chris and Laura have said, looking forward to collaborating with everyone here.
Right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. It's really great to put some faces. I, my Special Education hat and CPAC hat, I, I know Chris well, and I look forward to. Learning more Laura and David. As you assimilate into the district, and I'm really excited about this opportunity for our Special Education Department, our Student Services. You know, where we were two years ago and where we, you know, are now. I know in light of also with COVID circumstances, it's really been tough. And, but I really am looking forward to, under Sir Franti's leadership, how we continue to grow and improve in support of our students. So. And I don't know if, are any of you gonna be attending the, the CPAC collaboration meeting, or is that on the 12th, or is that, Jeff, is that you primarily?
That's primarily me. I, I open up invitations to the principals and the team chairs.
I know it's a day after a holiday, so it's, it's tough.
They're, they're always welcome. Generally, if they have something they want to share, a lot of times they'll share it with me, and I'll bring it forward. And same thing, if you have questions for them, you could always contact them directly or get ahold of me, and I'll work with them. Because the only way we're gonna be successful is to pull out every single piece of knowledge that they're bringing into their position. And where they come from, such diverse backgrounds, there's a lot of knowledge to mine there. There's so much gold that they don't even realize they have, but I'll keep working on them during the year. And, and share that with everybody.
Thank you. And I just want to go around to other members. Mary, if you.
No, I'm just glad, great. It's great to meet you all, because this is actually a first opportunity. So even for Chris, even though you've been here, I've heard about you from some of the Paris that I'm familiar with, but really great to.
All good, I hope.
It's all good. So, we're in for a good year.
Absolutely.
We are. We are. Hillary?
Um, thank you guys for all for coming, so we can meet you. I'm interested in David and what you did at JRI. I think they're an amazing organization. And then I just would be interested to know if, as the new chairs come and learn about Maynard. If you have feedback for us about how we can best support Special Ed. I think a big concern of our district is that. A lot of kids end up going out of district and costing a lot of money and wondering if we could. You know, help things earlier on to make sure we, to help us meet the needs of the kids in district. So I'd be interested to know, as you learn things, all three of you, what you think we could be doing to help that.
That's a great question. I mean, I, I really believe that Maynard has a lot of talent and great resources. For every student that lives in this town, and we have an obligation, and I think, I, I mean, an exciting challenge to. Exhaust all of our resources before considering any out-of-district placement and really work with. You know, broadening everyone's mindset into thinking, well, if we don't have it here, why don't we, and how can we? Make it happen for, for our students. And that, that's, I think, I imagine the approach across. You know, everyone at, at each of the schools really kind of. Take your good look at what we have, and really, you know, if we don't, we can figure it out. I think that's, that's really the way to go.
I would second what David just said. I was the out-of-district coordinator for the entire district of Abington. And it was always just a special celebration for me when we could bring a student back into district. So I think it's a matter of looking where our needs are across the district and considering programmatic changes as they're needed, because our students belong in Maynard. Whenever possible. So that's a passion of mine and a priority of mine as well.
Wonderful to hear. Thank you.
Elizabeth?
No, just thank you for coming. I'm glad to meet you and look forward to seeing all the things you do in the future. Thank you, and thank you, Jeff, for bringing them in.
And I just want to add on a personal note, you know, beyond the. The, because the team chairs, I know, interact with the out-of-district. Kids as well. We don't have a separate coordinator like other districts do. It's absorbed within the, the building team chair roles. I know a lot of the time that team chairs have to devote to those meetings outside of their building. Per se, are also quite heavy sometimes when you're coordinating with staff and external entities and, you know, supporting kids who may be out. And it can sometimes be a lot of stakeholders there, and that team chair is such a, an important hub of that information between parents and kind of funneling it. And so it, I really appreciate that role and with reverence, because I know my child has benefited from it personally, but I also know. The responsibility that such a role comes with, and. And when you deal with kids, it's a lot of emotions there often as well. So. But I appreciate the work that everyone is doing, and thank you all as well.
Thank all of you for such a warm welcome.
Much. And I'm almost tempted, it would be inappropriate to go into a budget discussion, because I think they're worth an incredible amount, but that, I'll hold out for another time. But, uh, but thank you, everybody. I don't know if it's okay to, to let them go about their business.
Yes, please. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks again. Thanks so much.
Have a good night.
You too.
Bye bye.
Go Red Sox.
All right, that was awesome. So the next, I'm moving on the next item on the agenda. We have the FY '21 End of Year Report, but. We are going to, without objection, table this to the October 21st meeting. I know Wayne was able to provide us more of a finalized report, but we'll allow some time for the school committee to review it a little bit more. And provide, you know, some questions that maybe Wayne and Brian can incorporate at that time in a more thoughtful way, if that's okay with everybody.
Sounds fine.
All right. And then the, the next item is to review and accept the annual list of SC policies for review. And so Hillary, are you okay with maybe speaking, you or Brian? I don't, Brian, you started talking earlier, but maybe speaking to this a little bit and. How this maybe came about in policy subcommittee and where you guys came to on this list?
Um, so Lydia put together this list of policies that the policy subcommittee will prioritize working on throughout the year. Um, my understanding is that as need arises, we can obviously add additional policies that are important. I know the DEI Subcommittee is interested in looking at some policies too, and then with COVID, other policies. Can come up. Some of these are ones that. Have, there's both a Maynard policy and a mask policy. And so the policy subcommittee will look at the two of them to see what to keep of. Between those two and sort of reconcile them. Some of them seem to have just a district policy and no mask policy. And some have a mask policy but no district policy. So there are sort of ones. That Lydia thought would be important that weren't gotten to last year, and then also that would be. That some of them weren't as relevant last year with school being remote. Um, I know like one is about in-person. Public comments at meetings, so that was put off till, since we didn't have in-person public comments then. Um, so this is a list of, I think, about 40-ish policies. That the plan is to prioritize.
And just can I clarify for people who are watching mask policies as Massachusetts Association of School Committees and not what you probably think it is, which is about masks in schools?
No, that word can be very triggering right now for many reasons, so. Yeah, no, it's, it's good, it's a good clarification point. Thank you. Brian, is there anything else that?
Hillary did a great job. We sort of whittled the list down from hundreds down to about 42. To really focus on this year and make sure, do really everything Hillary talked about. Making sure that our policies are aligned with mask policies. And just being clear that they're a good fit for the town of Maynard.
Right. I think at one point, we were talking about maybe some, a couple of the subcommittees helping out by taking a few of them, like I, I. I asterisked the ones that had to do with like budget, and then there were a couple that had to do with like strategic planning, but you guys are gonna. Take the lion's share, and then we'll just deal with them the way that we have been in the past, right?
Um, I hadn't heard any, I hadn't really heard much about that, but I can write down to bring it up. I think that some of them, it seemed like they would be pretty straightforward. Um, so it may not be too. Labor-intensive to go through some of them. I haven't read all of them, but I think that some of them are really based on legal requirements, and so there's not a lot of room. For us to change a lot, so it may not be too labor-intensive. But I think definitely. The people who would know more about different areas would be best suited to give input on those areas.
So Mary.
Yeah.
I think the finance one, so Lydia and I had talked, you know, a while ago about those. I think the intent would be, it would be like a. Kind of a parallel, right? So that the, you know, some of the, but like the, like, we, we talked about the cost enters, right? So we would. You know, review the recommendations by the district, you know. Then those would be vetted by the school committee, and then that would inform the policy. I think there's like a, a two-part. So I do think that there is the intent in some of those to have. You know, a partnership in them, because it's, some of them, you know, requires that financial input and, you know, discussion and. I'm guessing they, you know, we, as they get to those lists, they probably will maybe point out when. I think we also can obviously dictate, like, for the finance ones, ones that we're working on, so like the calendar. You know, the certain small things like that. We, with the feedback, we can, we can propose our recommendations from the budget side.
Yep.
And then.
I think in that time, we would just, yeah, we were just trying to lighten the load for the policy.
Yeah, I think, I think it makes sense. You know, I don't think we want to do redundancy. We're both working on the same stuff, but I think. You know, if we're talking about it anyway in some capacity, it makes sense that we would, you know, inform. It needs to be embedded in a policy eventually, right? For some of the things that we are doing. So.
So we'll just do it the way that we did last year, which was very productive.
I did have a question about the, the school committee bylaws. In relation to the, I know the handbook. And, and some, some of these are, I think, are, are, there's a lot of, I think, I'm worried about redundancy, right? So there's some pieces, components that are in a handbook and potentially in a bylaw, and I want to make sure that, you know. We either maybe carve content out of one place and have it only in one place needed, so we, if we updated it, we're not having different information in, in multiple places. So that'd be my only feedback on it, is just to be considerate as we're doing, like, I was looking actually in the handbook, and some of the handbook. Where it talks about the duties is also in our bylaw. And so do we want to not have that in the handbook and then leave it to the bylaw, or do we want to maybe absorb it? Into the handbook and, you know, it, for places we put, where we don't have differing information in two, in two places. One might be outdated and one might not. So that would be my, my thought, is how we can align it if we are, and also looking at some of the policies that we may adopted. As that mass, was it January 2020? I think we did adopt some governance policies in there, so I just. Was really not sure about, do we, or how, how those would all play a part into the bylaw. We want to eliminate maybe the bylaw and just only have governance policies, you know, or whatever. I just want to make sure our redundancies, we're not updating, forgetting a place that may have differing information.
Yeah, definitely don't want two different contradictory policies.
Well, it may not be always a policy, right? So like the handbook.
Or two different documents.
Yeah, exactly, the guidance, so. So that would be my, my only, I guess, pause is that if we, and this, I guess, are we voting on this, but we can always amend it, right? I mean, I just want to make sure, do we need to vote on this, or is it just that we, because if we don't do all of them. You know, it holds us to things that maybe we're not gonna be able to do all of them, right? So is the, is the motion that we will proceed with prioritizing, is that what I'm thinking, Brian? Is that we're, where the recommendation is that we're prioritizing these policies for the FY '22 year for consideration?
Correct. My understanding was these 40 or so were the ones that we were focusing on this year, and I, my understanding was that we, that. We were looking for a vote so that the school committee was in agreement with these 40 or so policies. And of course, it, you know, it's amendable at any point if things change.
Okay. Beth, I, I didn't know if you had some thoughts or feedback on anything.
No, because it sounds like, my understanding is that we're prioritizing these, but then each time the subcommittee thinks that they're done with one, we get to look at it as a full board anyway, right? And then we can decide if we think that there is any conflict. So we're, we're just saying at this point, like, yes, go ahead and look at these, and then we'll look one by one as the year goes on. Is that right?
Yes. Yeah, devote, devote the attention to these priority, but I think obviously COVID time, so it sounds like it really isn't holding us to. We need to prioritize something later that comes up. We do what we need to do for business purposes. This isn't like legally binding where we're, can't ever address anything else for the year.
Right, yeah.
So, okay. So then I'll go ahead. Is everyone comfortable with what we've presented as the priorities for, right? So I'll make a motion that we accept the policy subcommittee's recommendation to, of, of policies to prioritize. For the 2021, 2022 school year, and I, I don't think I need to cite all these. I'm hoping.
No.
Okay, but I'm just thinking for minutes-wise, Colleen, are you?
As presented?
Okay, thank you. Okay. As presented, thank you. And maybe we could have a link to the, somewhere, just so if anyone was wondering what they were.
It's actually on the agenda. It's a public knowledge. If anybody went on the agenda for tonight, it's.
Oh, it's in the, it's in the packet.
Yeah.
Right there. Awesome. There we go. Beautiful. So we can just reference it then in a minute. Okay, great. All right, so that was my motion.
I can second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Hillary? Beth?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Natasha? Yes. Okay, motion carries. Alrighty then, let me go back. My agenda. So the next item on the agenda is to review the SC member handbook, and without objection, I think this should be something that we table. And Lydia's absence, does that sound? Reasonable? Okay. All right, so we will table that to the next meeting for October 21st. Next item on the agenda is the amended EBCFA. Policy, and I think the intent was also. To, is this, this was not, I know this was, Lydia had shared recent information more recently, but is this critical need, Brian, to vote on this evening, in your view?
I don't think so. I mean, we have a current mask policy in operation, which is working more than adequately. I think there was some recommendations and conversation about if we wanted to amend, but we don't need to do it tonight.
Okay, can you speak to a little bit, maybe, or Hillary? What those, with a potential discussion around, so just we can kind of mull over at least.
I mean, really, the policy is probably coming from MASC for the most part. I mean, really, the policy is probably coming from MASC for the most part. Um, with some suggestions from this committee at different points. Uh, the conversation most recently was around specifically citing clear masks. So the challenge with adding that was, and I could show you on the screen to make it easier, but most of you probably wear masks at some point, and the cloth masks fit pretty nice and tight here. Um, which is probably why we have significantly less kids with colds. The issue with adding specifically saying clear masks is they don't fit that way. Um, we let kids use them, every school does, and so there are kids that need to see lips move. Um, so within certain rooms and at certain times, that's completely appropriate and we will, and we continue to do that. If however, we say that we needed to figure out how to make that align with the current policy, which talks about being tight on the sides of your face, which the current clear masks that we have, and we have a variety, they're just not, just because of the material.
Right.
It doesn't mean we're not using them. It just, we weren't comfortable citing it specifically. There's enough language in here that allows kids to use a variety of, of masks that are keeping them safe, and if they do in fact need the clear mask, they can in fact use them.
Okay, I think, yeah, thank you for, for Claire, because I think this was probably feedback that I shared.
Yep.
I think on this meeting, okay. Um, and I wanted to clarify, um, because I know that MASC had um recommended, they had a policy, right? And then we deliberated on it, and then the next day, Dessie came out with their mandate. So, um, so I think
I think you just lost volume, Natasha.
I think.
And you're back.
And a back, okay, um. Think, uh, for reference point, I was looking at the Dessie mandate. And what, they had some very, and maybe it's that I, I, I hear what you're saying, that the, the masks, the clear mask or not, I was looking at um language from the mandate from the state, and it said that transparent mask may be the best option for both teachers for deaf and hard of hearing students, so that's where I pulled that. Um, it also talked about face shields, so I didn't think it was mandating it, but it more of a suggestion, and I think my view is, is only to um, to demonstrate that we're being thoughtful for all of those scenarios, and I know we are, but I, I think that if the state is, is highlighting it as something, it, it didn't seem unreasonable that we couldn't just mirror that language from the state um, in a very just general way, that it would be like, it is being suggested. I, and I understand as a child, as a parent of a child who gets speech therapy, um, right now, I know that there are instances where parents are being asked to consent for controlled environments where a child mask might need to be taken off for, for services. Um, you know, so there are, I think that's under the purview of, you know, the team to decide that, right, for the, for the child. But um, my only thing is just, I just like to have, I always like to have language that if it says it at the state level, that they're being considerate of this, I just felt like it was important for us to just allude to that or acknowledge that, that we're also mirroring that.
Understood.
Um, but that, that was really kind of my, my feet, my thoughts and that feedback, and nothing that again needs to be voted on tonight, but just to clarify. Um, anything else, Hillary?
Um, that was pretty much our discussion, I had also mentioned that I wish that we could say that mask um breaks needed to occur outside. Um, but it didn't seem like that was really adjusted in the protocol, um, and it would be complicated and difficult to add that. Um, so that wasn't added either, so the protocol that we have currently is the same one as we had the last time we discussed and voted.
Okay, so um, Beth, you have any questions or thoughts? Oh, she's muted.
Thanks, my family's being loud, um, so, so this policy we're looking at is the same as the last time, or what is different about this one?
Nothing, it wasn't updated.
So then, okay.
Right, so there's nothing to vote on, I think it's just more a matter of, I didn't have the context on fully as well, I think, because it was kind of a um, recent development, so um, and, and since Lydia's not here to share exactly, that's where I wanted to defer to Brian and Hillary to, to clarify um, that a little bit more. Um, but do you have any thoughts on adding, not adding, did you feel it wanting to amend it, or are you fine with how it is?
It sounds like how it is is going to be how it stays, is what it sounds like, because it sounds like the, the two things that are still kind of nagging at our board are not going to go anywhere, so I think that that's, and here we are.
Okay, so are you meaning that, I mean, if the majority of the board wants to take action on it, I think it can. I don't think it's, it doesn't sound like it's necessary, and it sounds like the district is at this point, making their accommodations on a case-by-case basis as the school, the students' needs are, are doing it. Um, my point is not necessarily um it's just more of an acknowledgement of language, that, you know, sometimes I, I do feel that there's important to put things to paper to, to, to demonstrate our thoughtfulness in certain things, um, but having it happen in the background is really the most important thing.
Right, yeah, I mean, like Hillary, I mean, I wish it said that mask breaks are outside. I think that they should take place outside, but if that's not a thing we can do, then that's not a thing we can do.
Can we, can we hear a little bit more about that, Brian, about the, not, the inability to not commit to having math, is that an operational issue, or I just want to, I know.
Sure, and I, we can talk a little bit about that. There are different issues at different grade levels, like today, for example, and earlier this week, when I walked around the middle school or Fowler School, you know, mask breaks were outside. It's a beautiful week, kids were happy to be outside, um, the fresh air was great. On Monday, they probably didn't want to go outside, because it was a monsoon, and they would have been drenched. Um, and once we put it into a policy, unless, you know, we're creative and we can say, well, weather permitting. And then that sort of defeats the purpose, because who's deciding then at that point if it's weather permitting, is it too cold, is it too wet? So the suggestion at one point was just to say that they were outside. And in New England, that just becomes a challenge to, do we really want kids outside in the poor weather? Um, then they're going to get all wet potentially, and then they have to come back in and, you know, sit in class. Um, so I think the teachers know that the recommendation, both from the state, from the CDC, from everybody, is get as much fresh air as you can, and when you, and when you can, take the kids outside and get the fresh air and do the mask break out there and come back in as quick as possible. Um, what are some of the other issues? The younger you go, and I think you got, everybody on screen knows this, um, in looking around, because we've all had young kids. It's a lot more work to take twenty or twenty-five, seven-year-olds and put them into their, you know, their raincoats and their boots and walk them outside and then reverse that whole process. Um, because one of the things that hasn't changed for us, and this was part of the conversation, was the time on learning. So as nice as the Department of Education has been, they're very not forgiving on time on learning. And they would not count us transitioning to go outside for a mask break to transition back as time on learning. So those are some of the constraints sort of in the background that we try and work with so that we're meeting our obligation on time on learning and creating opportunities for mask breaks.
So I wonder if it, thank you for sharing that, um, because I, I know that it is complex and the, I know I've heard feedback, even when we had the two recesses about how much time it is to get the kids, we lose, they're like outside for five minutes, it felt like sometimes, by the time you get all them geared up. Is there a potential, and I, I hear what you're saying about um when you put it to paper, it's committing to, you know, to the letter in, in many ways to feel compliant, is there a way to say, you know, just generally best efforts, and it sounds like we're doing that, but again, putting it to paper, I think may, maybe feel more reassuring that best efforts um, will be to prioritize outside, you know, breaks when allowed.
I think that would be okay.
Just something that doesn't, you know, hold you to all cases, because right now we make a determination even for recess, when you have an outdoor recess or not. So it could be following that same, like, isn't there like a weather thing that you check for, you know? So it's just, you know, similarly, right, doesn't have to be different circumstances, right?
So I think if we were in agreement on those sort of, that level of expectation, I, I'm comfortable with that, and I think teachers would be comfortable with that. I think it's if this, if the impression is, I don't want you as a school committee to feel like I'm saying, yes, we're going to go outside every day, and then when we get back to school, that's not what's happening, so I just don't want that level of disconnect.
Sure.
If it really is, when it's possible, we would like that to happen. I think that's how we're operating, and if we wanted to put that to paper, I think we would all support that.
Mary, I haven't, haven't, sorry, you, floor to you yet, but I wanted to get your.
I, that would be, yeah, just best effort so that it's, it's um, not mandatory, but knowing that they're, they're trying, which I think they probably are anyway, but if everybody wants to put that in for additional, then I'm fine with that.
Hillary, just circling back to you, is that something that you feel to some, you know, like, that it would be, if it's prioritized, you know, outdoor mask breaks will be, best effort will be prioritized if, whatever, whether permitting or circumstances permitting? Um, and then leave it to the discretion of the superintendent or the building, you know, principal to? Um, otherwise, does that sound something that might be more settling for you?
Um, I mostly care that in practice, like, that's really the effort being made, um. I'm not really, I don't necessarily care whether or not we have it in a policy, or you know, there's support from administration to encourage that, or like, just, I don't, I'm not particularly committed to the mechanism to encourage that, I just want to make sure that that's the goal for most people. Um, but I'm, I'm happy with either an informal way or a policy way.
Okay.
Agreed, yeah.
Beth, so if you're, are we okay with that, that, that type of language, if, if the policy's optimistic? Look at that, just to put some wording in there that prioritizes it as an effort?
Sure, I just, I mean, I don't think it's, I think the practice is, is like established, the teachers are doing what they're doing. You know, no one's going to be like, wait, what was that policy again, look back and make sure that the wording hasn't changed, so.
I just want to undermine the significance of policy, policy to me is important, I mean, I, I'm a compliance manager, so I, I know we, we may be doing it in practice, and I, that's, it is important. However, I think for the reassurances of community, so we can express what is important also for the, the intent of the school committee's, you know, intent, I think also is important, that, because that drives administrative direction. And so if we, if it's important for us to somewhere indicate that, if it's come up in a couple of conversations, that we want to see how we can find a way to make that possible, what that doesn't, you know, restrain, you know, operationally.
Sounds good, yep.
Okay, okay, so, so maybe Brian, Hillary and Lydia, and you guys can kind of circle back on the, and, and see on that and maybe re, I don't know, think about that again and propose some language, okay. Great. Alrighty then, so any other? Any other thoughts on the mask before we move on? Nope, all right, hearing none. Um. Now we'll move into the superintendent report, Brian, all yours.
Thank you. Um, it's sort of really the, most of the report is really around COVID. Although it's kind of funny, because a lot of the time between the last meeting and this meeting has been sent, spent doing work around subcommittees, which I know you talk about later, but it's worth noting that a lot of time and energy for the school committee and the school admin, you know, school in general is focused on these subcommittees that are kind of buried on the agenda. Maybe at some point we'll pull them out and do a little more explanation on those, because we have a strategic planning subcommittee, it just comes to mind, because we met today. And we have some exciting stuff happening there, which I know Elizabeth will talk to later, or at some point we can share a little bit more in-depth about what happens at that committee. And our diversity committee, which is a new committee for us this year, we're just getting up and running. Um, again, exciting things, policy committee, obviously we referenced already tonight. Our budget subcommittee, um, again, exciting things happening there on ways to improve practices and policy, and just procedures within the budgetary world for our school, and then our personnel, which we sort of, we renamed, so if people are like, what's that, that has to do with? Um, some of it is negotiation, some of it is contracts and whatnot, but again, several subcommittees that really drive what happens behind the scenes. My report today is really about COVID, um, and just some, some numbers and some updates for people in terms of vaccination rates and how are we doing? Um, and we're really, we're, we're holding steady, our numbers thankfully are not going up in terms of active cases. Um, I'm, I'm happy to say that we have about, in terms of the high school staff, about eighty-three percent of the um, staff vaccinated at this point, and it's, we have a small staff in every building, so that's a pretty strong number. Um, I would say Fowler is actually a little bit higher up around ninety percent, partly because that does include the central office. Um, we're, we just happen to be in this building, and Green Meadow coming in at eighty-five percent, so pretty, pretty steady there in the mid to high eighties, pushing ninety percent of Fowler for teacher vaccination and students. Um, and the way the student number comes about is that information is actually linked in the nursing uh, system snap, so they get that confidentially, they can check in and see which students have gotten, and it's all part of the health records. Um, at the high school, we have about seventy-three percent of our students vaccinated at this point, and obviously Green Meadow doesn't apply, and Fowler's it sounds very low, but I think it's in the low twenty percent, but keep in mind that a portion of those students are not eligible to be vaccinated, so it's a little deceiving there. Um, we've been working with CIC to maintain our testing and really clarify what we have going on and working with parents. Um, it's funny, we all went into education and we love education, and we didn't go to medical school. And trying to work through the contact tracing and what happens on, you know, with test and stay, if the students are close contact of this student and it happens at school versus if it happens at home. So we reread the diagrams and talk through them pretty much every day, and by the end of the year, we will be well-versed and we'll be able to rattle off what to do in every situation. In the meantime, we go back to that diagram, we, we, we work with our board of health person, we work with um, our school nurses, we meet every week. Um, it's a good, good, strong team, um, they are flexible and just really working to make sure that the kids are safe and they're keeping the building safe, and at the same time, I mean, I just want to acknowledge that there, everybody's really working to get back to normal as much as possible, we've had a couple of field trips. We're maintaining our activities, i.e. sports, um, right now, the music program, so we're really trying to do everything we can do um, within the guidance from the state and keeping everybody safe. And the masks right now seem to be doing the trick for us, we're grateful for that. Um. The overall numbers in Maine are really, they go up about, like, every few weeks, you know, I check all the time. And then I report out to you guys, and they go up from, they were in the low seventies, they've gone up to seventy-three, I think, for fully vaccinated um, individuals per capita, the town was hitting seventy-four percent, so it's slowly but surely creeping up there. Um, and like I said, we meet weekly, we talk more often, we're very grateful to have uh, CIC working with us, so they actually do provide a nurse onsite every day, all day to do the testing, which then allows our nurses to really maintain their capacity, do everything else they have to do and pick up some of that um, as needed, but they've been very helpful to us. Um, and really, I have to say, I think that is the gist of the report right now.
And yeah, I, it definitely was very, very, very um, COVID protocol deep, understandably. Um.
I just feel like they. Questions?
Yeah, 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 definitely, yeah, I was going to go around, so yeah, Mary?
Is that all right?
Yeah, I was going to go around.
Oh, um, Brian, you met, had mentioned, I think, last time that all the testing is going on at Fowler, because that, it seems to make the most sense to concentrate it there? Is that still the case?
So if the test and stay, it, so there is some testing within each building, and then if you need to come in in the morning, because you're part of the program where you get tested, then we would have you come to Fowler in the morning, because that allows the nurse from CIC to be in one location, and then she goes to the buildings as needed throughout the day.
Okay, excellent, and um, do we have the CIC staff member indefinitely, or is that like through December, and if we don't, do we, as far as we know, they're going to stay through the year if we need them?
I would say yes, that, Dessie hasn't said that there's a time limit on it. We've been, so the impression we're under is we have them as long as we, as long as they're offering test and stay. As long as they're often, offering the testing programs, we have that level of support.
Okay, all right, and um, if it goes, I'm saying this very carefully, if it were to go longer than we have them, are they also training our nurses so that um, they'd be able to pick up the slack after, you know, like, for instance, if we go into next year, which we're not going to, but I guess, I, I'd like to know that, that after they leave, that the, the mechanism I guess I'd like to know that that after they leave, that the the mechanisms are still in place so that our nurses could, that they're training, training our people.
So honestly, I think our nurses have the capacity to do it. What we would probably end up having to look at is the number of people that we have on staff to do that, cuz the beginning of the year, it's, and you know this. Is very, very busy in a nurse's office between physicals coming in from kids, immunizations, sports, physicals. Just and then kids just on a daily basis who might get sick, so we might in fact need another person. To help with that in the future, but our nurses have the skill set to do that.
Okay, so that's good for us to keep in mind for the budget process.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, alright, that's that's everything I had, thank you.
Hey, Beth.
Yeah, I just have a quick question, I I know we had second on our priority list for CIC, maybe pool testing. Are we, is that anything that's still in the works, are we thinking we don't need that now, or where is that now?
So we are open to that as soon as they have staffing to support it. And I think we're in the same situation as several schools, at least from the calls I've been on recently with. Desi and CIC, they did a great job selling this program and everybody said, yep, we're in, we want it. But they didn't have enough staffing to put out for pool testing as well yet, so we're in the queue on that one.
And then does it bigger your timeline at all? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hillary.
Um, for the pool testing, um, do you have an opportunity to ask about a timeline? Cuz I know a couple of schools that said that they weren't going to be able to do it are now able to do it.
I absolutely can ask, I can follow up with them.
And then with the test and stay, so if a kid is exposed and they're being tested in the morning, do the parents come in and stay with them? So that if they're positive, then they go home, or do they, you know, test positive and then have to sort of quarantine at? The nurse's office at Fowler until they can be picked up?
No, they would come in and wait the few minutes while the, for the test to process. So that if they had to go home, they could just go home.
And then do you have any sense of how many tests are being run in a week, or how many tests have been run so far, or? Like a rough guess?
No, I don't wanna give you a rough guess, I will ask and get you the right number.
Alright. That's it.
I do know that we, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
I was gonna say, we've had a total of six positive cases with a, I think, four at Fowler, two at Green Meadow. And in terms of, but we haven't had a lot of kids out of school, so of those six, I think, and now I don't have that paper right in front of me, but I think it's just under. Eighty or so close contacts as a result of those six, but because of mask wearing and test and stay. We've had very few kids having to miss school. But that doesn't directly answer the question, but I will ask about that and get an answer for you.
I was sort of wondering if you have eighty kids every morning lined up waiting.
No. We don't, there were a couple of mornings. Last week or the week before, where we had a group of elementary kids coming through to Fowler in the morning to get tested and their parents waited. It was most of a class, just to be cautious, they were the little kids. But there is not a line of eighty on any day, thankfully, there's wood, yeah, no.
I was just thinking that makes a whole operational thing about keeping those eighty kids and their parents separate from everybody else, and that's a.
If the numbers got that big, we'd probably have different conversations.
Right.
Okay.
If there's a way you can push for having the the pool testing by, you know, maybe the day after Thanksgiving break, that'd be great.
Yeah, I will ask, I'll email them today.
So I was I was gonna actually also just because of the holidays, especially when people are leaving to go places. And also just as the weather gets cooler, people get sicker with regular colds that are not. I would certainly love to hear some pressure, if at all, that we can, you know. Put on getting a little bit more prepared for the winter or the cooler weather. And people traveling, you know, anticipating travel for the holidays and all that. As much as possible. I did have a question, Brian, about the. The information that you gathered from the about the staff vaccination, cuz I know the students are in. The SNAP system, but is it staff, did they disclose, is it self disclosing that they, you were able to capture those numbers, is that how?
The nurses have access, if you get vaccinated, they have access to that, it's not as easily accessible.
Got it. Okay, no, that's what I was wondering, cuz I know it was different than the typical school system that they use for students, so, okay. And, you know, kind of on the lines of holiday and colds and whatnot, I was wondering if. The border health or the nurse that. That comes recommends, or are there certain local testing places that families, like if we. Could put on our website, you know, cuz I know sometimes school districts have said, you know, if you are traveling and wanna. Get a test or something that they kind of direct people like go here, so are there certain, maybe our border health can even say. Like for free and timely, I don't, I I know they go, you can go to your doctor, but sometimes it's not always. As quick and easy, I don't know if that's possible, just to get maybe like one or two that we could, you know.
I can follow up with her and see what we can do, I know one of the challenges right now, and it came up this week. Is for people, two two groups right now, if you are a person who doesn't have health insurance, this is not so easy. And or if you're a person who doesn't have a car, a vehicle, if you don't have transportation, because. Not every CVS or Walgreens offers the same test and same availability, so she is working on a solution. Doesn't have it quite yet, working with the town and the board of health to see if they can, specifically if the town can do some things to get. Sort of a clinic to come to town, but more when we hear, I will update you when I hear more, but those are the two populations that. We just sort of became a little more aware of that are struggling if they need to get a test.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely, we definitely need to prioritize that cuz I hate to hear that someone can't get access to testing cuz they don't have a vehicle and. Have no access to healthcare, I mean, that's horrible, and I also just wanna mention, I know our border health is not, it's Megan, I think, cuz we. Megan, so our health agent, I think, is Megan stepping in still, right, she's their interim health agent, so. She's wearing multi hats until the, I don't think they've hired anybody yet permanently. Yeah, so. Mary, did you, or someone else have a, I thought I saw a hand, oh, Hillary.
Um, to follow up on that, for if you're hearing it from kids that don't have health insurance, can somebody work with them about mass? Health or getting the kids health insurance? And then if, sorry, what?
I was saying, I actually didn't hear that directly from the student, I heard that, so this conversation came about with the nurse we work with for the town. Who's, and so, I don't think, but to answer your question, absolutely, yeah, Kathy. We'll work with anybody and everybody we can.
And then the other thing I was thinking of is, I know for. Like symptomatic testing, we're only wanting to test kids who become symptomatic at school.
Correct.
But say there were a child who had been symptomatic and. Like, I know my daughter last year was dehydrated and we knew she was dehydrated, but they wanted her to get a COVID test before she went back to school, even though she was feeling fine. And so I could drive her to a clinic half an hour away to get tested, but if there were a child that didn't have a car and they were going to miss several days of school, waiting for somebody. That a friend or a relative to come drive them to a testing site, is that something that they could talk to the principal about and maybe they could consider an exception for that? Just so that we don't have kids missing multiple days of school when healthy because they can't find access to testing?
Great question, and I know you're not gonna put me on the spot to say that we would violate the rules of CIC testing protocol. But we absolute, but to your point, we absolutely will work with every student we can, and the goal is. And the whole goal, to your point, Hillary, of the test and stay and the symptomatic is, we don't want kids to miss school. So we work very hard to make that our priority.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
I was gonna say, maybe it could be something like the parent and the child could come in and see the nurse and the nurse can say, yes, they're totally healthy, I can look at them and see they're totally healthy. Or just as some way to talk to them about ways to avoid being out for multiple days. And then my other question is, I know. You know, there's, Biden has made vaccine mandates for private employers and for federal employers and Baker's made vaccine mandates for. State employees, it seems like the only group of employees who's not currently covered under a vaccine mandate are public local employees. So I didn't know that we wanna be like the one exception that's not having a vaccine mandate. I know we're not there yet, but has there started to be conversations about that with unions?
Not with the unions, and school systems around us are doing a couple of different things, they're either like we are and they're kind of just waiting to see. And not feeling when we're at that already eighty-five percent vaccination rate, that we really need to push it cuz we have a low number. They've done one of two things, from what I've seen from local districts, is that they said you have to have the vaccine and or. You no longer have a job by this date. We wouldn't be in a great position to do that, I'll be honest, simply because we're struggling to get staff and be fully staffed. So that could be a problem for us, quite frankly, and we don't wanna lose good teachers, the other option that would be probably more realistic for us would be. You need to get vaccinated and or if you can't for whatever reasons. Then you need to get tested weekly at your own. At your own way. And that could be an option, I sort of question that only because we're already pushing eighty, eighty-five percent vaccination rate. And if I say, well, you have to get vaccinated once a week, so this is what, how I go through it, but I'm not a doctor. I'm like, oh, well, I'm gonna go on Sunday cuz it's my day off and it's convenient, I'm gonna show up for work on Monday. Well, who's to say that I didn't contact something Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday, but I'm now coming to work Monday through Friday. So it didn't seem like scientifically it worked. If you will. I think it's a good conversation to continue to have and sort of watch what's happening in surrounding towns, and if there's a need. As long as our vaccination rate stays up at that eighty-five, eighty, eighty-five, ninety percent. Then I'm feeling pretty comfortable that those that will are and those that aren't are wearing masks and are being responsible. But it's a great question, and I'm sure it will come back up again, so thank you for asking.
Yeah, I think it's just important for us to maybe come up with some, at some point, I think we're probably gonna have to commit to. Something, and so I I know you've been mulling it over and I appreciate. All that cuz it's not, there's a lot of hot topics on, you know, on the direction and where things have not been received well, so. I I wonder, I, you know, yeah, anyway, more to come, it sounds like, so nothing that we need to really. Take on right now, but I think at some point we will need to to do that.
Overall, it seems like things are working well right now, so grateful for that.
Yeah, I mean, we we, there is, you know, staff shortages around the state, so that is a real thing, and. And that doesn't serve our students well by not having teachers or paraprofessionals, or having fewer of those. So, but thank you, and also to the staff and everyone who has been, who has gotten vaccinated, who has been able to, I really appreciate. Supporting the safety and care of our our students and our community. Because it it does make, does make, bring reassurances that, you know, hey, we're doing our best, and I appreciate seeing those high numbers. Amongst our staff as well, so. I did have one thing, just Hillary, when you talked about the this. It makes me go back to thinking about, is there a void of wraparound social services care, right, we kind of. Talked about staffing internally and budgeting for a social worker, and then we weren't sure about. The need for that because, but then there was gonna be some data collection on those type of inquiries. Because I do think it is really a town also partnership in 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 supporting that, I don't think it's a school, I think the school is the. Triage, right, you you may may receive the the inquiry, but we can't solve, like I really. The principals shouldn't really be solving how to sign someone for health insurance, or you know what I mean, like those are things that are. Beyond the school education, but also do impact the student's ability to. You know, get educate, continue in with school, so I definitely would really like to see some, any opportunity to advocate for. Expanded town level wraparound that can help those. Mark, you know, those those groups that are falling through, especially as we get into winter and colder weather. Please keep us updated on that.
Will do.
And then the data, any data that we have that that's tracking, you know, those instances that we're seeing, it'd be great to kind of. Help inform, understand how the the nurses or the counselors are. Getting those fielding or the principals, I guess, for even that matter, are fielding some of those. Questions about inability to access testing, inability to have health insurance, go get, you know, things that are not school specific, but. Do impact the child's ability to attend school. Thank you. Alrighty. Anything else for the superintendent report? No, alright, so the chair report is gonna be kinda quick cuz I don't have one, and I will. Yield the time, I mean, let me just double check to make sure that Lydia, hold on, if she had put anything in there. I know we've had so many things going on, I just wanna make sure that. Didn't miss anything. We had our workshop, we had, you know, we had our workshop, so thank you to all the, all of everybody for participating, Dorothy. You know, Dorothy really helped facilitate some great conversation yesterday, some of it was really some. Some pain points, and we have new members and we have great passionate people on our board and. I I think for me, I will just say my biggest takeaway was. We need to keep assuming good intent. We need to be also receptive to feedback and we need to, I think, really think about how we're delivering feedback. And and just our surroundings, right, we have a responsibility to to that, and I think we all. Come from the same place and it's just working together and and improving that for the, the betterment of our students, and so. Some great topics that were discussed for goals. Look forward to how those evolve, to seeing how those evolve and how they can inform and. Kind of build a line with the schools, the district's initiatives there. Am I missing something that we, that came up recently, I think that's really. Oh, peg access hearing, I mean, I can say that that was a select board meeting. The other evening that came up, and it was really, a really ground swell of advocacy from our students. Who, from WAVM, who attended the select board meeting to talk about. How important peg access is for funding WAVM, funding, you know, the chapter seventy-four program. And, you know, the conversation really was more reliant or it kind of shifted where. And this was, I think this was Comcast public hearing, maybe, I'm not sure, but although they didn't show up, so it's kinda weird. But cable, you know, the dynamics of right now, people are shifting away from cable, right, so it, so that's where. The concern has been is that everything is like going online streaming, so cable is. Slowly fading, and I think when the contract was enacted. Years ago, the the vendors, Verizon and cable, they believe that they would be out of the cable business by now. But they still are in it, maybe not as committed, so I think that's where. Through negotiations, Brian, Greg had, he took in the feedback. And it really will be for him to really negotiate on how we can continue with peg access funding potentially as part of a contract. And just to clarify, PEG is public education and government, it's a fee that Verizon and. And Comcast pay, well, actually, our 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 community pays, so they, and they allocate it to us to support. Certain public education and government interests. WAVM is one, not only for a school, but it supports our town. Through a lot of board meetings and all the, all these things, so anyway, I think more to come on that, but it was really the advocacy there from the town and. The FinCom, Alana, she she spoke and really said that we need to really be thinking about how we can. Consider from a budget perspective. Cuz right now, it's about three hundred and sixty-six thousand for this FY twenty-two. That will be a lot to absorb for FY twenty-three. For this, for the school department, so it's gonna be some conversations on how we we can. How we need to maybe build some, or if we can't build it all into our budget, how we might need to be supported at from the town level. Mary, did, does that sound about, I know you've been part of some of the peg conversations as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say with the tribal, and we had some conversation too, so, and that's pretty much, yeah, pretty much where we are.
Yeah. So more to come there, I I think those are primarily the, any chair takeaways that I. Can can have, and then now the subcommittee. Can, can have, um, and then now the subcommittee, um, reports, uh, Mary, since.
So we, um, so we, um, Natasha and I were at the budget, uh, the tribe board, which is the. Two members of the finance committee, two of the school committee and two of the select board that we, I, I felt like that was a, it was a really good meeting the other night. Um, that we talked about just, you know, where we are as far as financially goes at the end of the year and. Uh, peg access was another piece of it and just, um, projections for next year and that, but I felt like it was, there was some really good conversation that, that took place, so. It's a real, it's a healthy, um, it's a healthy group, it's saying, I feel like there's a, a lot of camaraderie there and everybody hears. From each, each side, um, the struggles, so, and then we all take it to back to our respective committees, so. Um, and then the other one was budget that, um, Natasha and I met with Brian, um, what day are we on here? Was it two, yet, was it yesterday? No, it was Tuesday, Tuesday. Um, but yeah, and that was really good too. Wayne is going to present the, uh, the end of year report that he has been working on diligently. That's, uh, pretty damn exciting, actually, the way that it's been presented and I think he's still here and awake, so that's a good thing. But, um, but yeah, so it's, um, so that was, that's pretty much that way, that one.
Yeah, and just to the, the budget, so, uh, just to highlight, because I think most of us know this, but this is the. Reporting out was something that we started last year in a more, uh, I think there's been data and I think what was missing was commentary. And, um, so the, the report that we anticipate having, um, Wayne will be sharing is really only the second of this. Series for us and it really is intended to not only provide the numbers, but also paint a picture. Um, with trends that might be coming up, um, you know, with either, like, costs that are coming up, things that maybe. Weren't anticipated or less than, you know, than they anticipated and that also can help inform our. Mind frame for budget planning also for the next year, right? Um, and so it does, it kind of builds into that transparency, um, in there and it. Ultimately, it will be posted these, on the website for public access, so there's that and we will share it, um. With, with other boards as well, so, um, look forward to, to that and I know Hillary, you had sent me some, some feedback, so I will. Consolidate some of those and Beth, if you have anything, oh, Hillary.
Um, could you guys also share from your budget subcommittee about the field task force?
Yeah, 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 um, yeah, before I move on, just to make sure Hillary, uh, Beth, if you have any questions on the. The report, on the end of year report. Um, just if you could, um, for anybody, even if you think of something else later, Hillary, by the fifteen. Um, just so I can consolidate them and provide them to, um, Wayne and Brian. So that they can incorporate in the presentation or speak to them at least, um, on the twenty-first. And then, yeah, so the, the field, so, um.
I can speak to that if, if you want, you want me to speak to it? Because what, what came out of it, so there was different conversations about, um, which way to move forward and I thought Brian had a really good suggestion, which is. He, myself, uh, Kevin Crusoe, who was the past athletic director, and then Mike, who is the current. Um, are just gonna meet informally next week and, you know, figure out how we want to move forward to have it, you know, the next steps. So we're gonna have an initial meeting and then we'll be, um, going from there, so.
Okay, so I think when we were speaking in our budget subcommittee, it was, there was a couple of things. One is that the town is also, and this is where. Um, there's some. Some other effort happening, Brian, you wanna?
Unmute yourself.
Yeah, I'll unmute myself, sorry. Um, so there are sort of multiple committees here and, and I spoke with Greg yesterday. Actually, no, today's Thursday, I spoke with Greg today and said, we are having our own internal group. Which Mary just referenced and explained, and I have Wayne on that committee as well, or that group as well, to really come up with. Here's what we envision for the schools in terms of uses, scheduling, maintenance, advertising, et cetera, and then. Come to some decision as a group, make a rec, so that I can then take that information, make a recommendation to you. As a school committee and you can give it its blessing, make suggestions, whatever the case may be, to then attend the town. Task force on solid ground, knowing where the school already stands and the school committee has given it its blessing. So that.
Yeah, no.
Clarify or update, yeah.
No, because it, it definitely got a little confusing at first and I, I think. We, we had talked about this, like, you know, months ago, as just kind of starting this, I envisioned it as just a school thing and I'm really glad that the. The town also feels that there's a need to, for consistency, however, I don't want to lose sight of our school priority and what's under our purview. Um, to address our needs and, and make sure that that's supporting the students, um, or our fields and whatever our protocols and safety. Are, so I really like that we would get a recommendation from our internal, like what, what is meeting our student, our, our needs. And have that inform a more town level. I just have a little worry. I go back to solar, okay, and I don't want to bring up bad stuff, but solar started as a school initiative. And then somehow different stakeholders at the town level got in and, and then we lost. The ability to input in the way or things change beyond what we understood and so that's what I keep going back to, I don't wanna. You know, have deja vu in, in that similar type of, so as long as we're able to understand where we are, we. Keep that, um, as our informed processes, what we, our intent is, I, I really like that idea and thank you very much for. Mary as well, I know for you for, for getting that, um, going there. Okay, and then I think the other thing was, um, CPAC, we, um, CPAC met, we had a parent session the other night. Jeff and a, a lot of the administrators, um, were able to attend, Laura attended. And, um, it was the first of many, we're working with, um. On collaboration with Nishova I mentioned before, it looks like it might be something related to decoding dyslexia presentation. From Nancy, Nancy Dugan and, um. And then, uh, possibly executive function for Sarah Ward, um, so nothing is, um. Those are the two that look like they might be in the spring, but it really is a great opportunity. I really like the potential to collaborate with neighboring districts. Um, it also lessens the cost, um, and, you know, we can certainly have regional participation for families, especially if it's, you know, online. It really helps there. And policy, I'm not policy, personnel, um, we have a meeting next week and we had a meeting. Last week and I didn't add it to my work schedules, my apologies for, um, uh, for, for arriving thirty minutes late. Nobody was there. So anyway, so thank you and, um, so more to come whenever, whenever that happens. And I think we have the select board, um, meeting on the twenty-sixth for our, um, board to board meeting. My understanding is it's not gonna talk budget, it's other interests, right? And so I think maybe protocols or things and, and Wayne or, not Wayne, um, Wayne's like, why are you calling me? Uh, Brian and, uh, Colleen, I, an agenda, I think that would be the only thing I heard there was agenda in the works, but if. Once there is one, it'd be great to get something certain, as we can kind of get our mindset of like the structure of what the conversations might entail. You have that?
Well, to your point, it's not budget, it should be goals between the boards and just relationships and working collaboratively. I think that's the purpose of the meeting.
Great, and I know that, um, they have one of their goals as a board is to, so I really appreciate. Um, their commitment to, to the, these efforts as, as we are as well, so. It was a big part of our discussion last night when we met in our workshop about how we can. Really continue to work on and, and, and improve our, uh, working relationship. And we all have the same interests, is, you know, supporting our, our town, and so I think. We keep the eye on the ball there that we, that will really inform how we can continue to engage. I think that's all I got, um, Beth?
Okay, well, we just had a meeting today of the strategy subcommittee, um, and we made some good progress. It was Mary and Brian and Colleen there and. Um, so, yeah, we, we have some ideas about, um, what we can have as some of our potential central values for the school, we looked at what our school has as strengths. Um, and use those to kind of build out what are the potential, um, values behind our, our pretty strengths. Um, so now that's gonna go out to the staff as part of their, um, their, uh, what do you call it?
The data equity walk?
Their survey, sorry, the survey that they're gonna do, um, which is, which is coming up soon, which will be part of our data walk. Um, that all of, it's, it's a much larger survey and there's just one question on it. Um, and so then we'll get more information in our next meeting, we'll have some more of a direction and we can go from there to think about how to, to align. Our schools around values.
Very exciting.
I know, I'm very excited about that, um.
And the other thing that Hillary can talk about too is that we did have our first E I, uh, subcommittee meeting and that was last Thursday. Um, so we started and we have a lot of questions and, uh, and. And we'll have, um, more, probably more direction next time, maybe Hillary, you wanna take it from there?
Uh, we met last week and it was the first meeting ever of the subcommittee, so it was a lot of just trying to figure out where we stand. Um, I think that our, initially, we have a whole bunch of questions for Brian. About sort of what the status of things are currently in the school and what sort of data is currently collected. Um, and then I think we'll probably talk about what sort of data we want collected. Um, that may be needed in addition to what's currently, um, already collected. And then sort of identify our goals, um, to work on and, um. How we can hear from stakeholders, um. As part of forming our goals and our plans for the year. I think one thing I'd be interested in is sort of, because we're creating this new. Um, what the ideas and thoughts are of other members on the community, of the committee about what we should be focusing on. And what everyone else think, would like us to focus on in this. Um, I think that probably, um, the data equity walk will sort of get, give us a good baseline for, to know where we stand. So, um, maybe at our meeting after the data equity walk, we could sort of go over what people are envisioning for the subcommittee. Um, but I think that'd be helpful at some point early on to get a sense of what you guys want us to be working on and make sure that's aligned with what we're sort of having. In the back of our mind to work on.
Well, we have that as, we have to do that, we have to figure out what our goals are and we, and we do need your input. And so it's good that that's part of our thinking about our goals so far, because we will need to have a real direction for that subcommittee before we get too far. Um, so our next, our next meeting is right after the data walks, that is kind of a lot of the focus of our first meeting. Um, but after that, we should have a, a, a plan from the rest of the committee about what, what it's for.
I'm excited to hear about it because I know this is new and I, and, um. Yeah, just excited to, to see what we can come up with, and I know it's come up a lot and I appreciate, um, the work and trying to bring some structure and understanding and. Input, um, to, to make it really, um, support our, our, our schools better.
Um, do we know when the data equity walk will be? I know it's, um, two weeks from Saturday, um. Is that morning or evening or?
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, 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 go ahead, I don't know.
Saturday, the last time it was in the morning from like nine to eleven, uh, I will confirm though.
Does it have to be, because I know it was really low participation and is it? Um, I just want to understand, could, uh, is there a structure to it that we can, is it, it's online? Does it have to be in person?
Uh, I don't, uh, there's no have to, that's the way it was done in the past, that's what we were thinking for this year. There's a lot of information to. A lot of things we'd have to figure out to be able to do it virtually. So I think the current plan is to do it. In person. There is a bit, there is a survey that goes out to everybody that they can participate in. Um, to gather a lot of that data, but then to actually come in and be part of the conversation is a different piece.
I remember at the last one, there's literally like five people who came and, and it was a lot of work. Yeah, because it was, I think part of it was because it was in person on a weekend, we have, we have childcare and stuff, um. Often, um, needs, I think some people would love to, to go, but I don't, I just am throwing out historical information for you to. You know, kind of understand, um, if there is a thought to, um, anything. Complimentary to what is going on, not to abruptly change it, but just to understand that it, in person did lend for really low participation. Um, last time and there was no COVID.
We could look at some other options. I mean, really, the only other option is online, virtually, but we could figure, we can take a look at that. We've gotten much better at that. Um, I can talk with Adam and get some help just in terms of techno, technologically speaking. How we could do that with the kinds of information that we'll have, so that people are able to access it in some meaningful way. So we'll take a look at that.
Okay.
And also, yeah, Brian, also, when, when we are going to, um, make the public know, you know, so that like it'd be great if they could be.
Next week, beginning of next week.
Okay, great, excellent, and maybe, maybe give a brief, um, description of what it, what it is, you know, what the data equity walk is.
Are you holding it on the sixteenth, you're saying?
The twenty-third?
Twenty-third, okay, because I was thinking town meeting is, okay.
Probably pushing it to people, but also really explaining what it would look like, because for me to give up. I mean, obviously not now, I'm on the school committee, but just as a parent, if I care about something at the school for a couple of hours on a Saturday morning. That I don't really know what it is, it would be hard for me to decide to make childcare arrangements or decide to make it a priority if I can't really envision what it is or why my. Being there would be important.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe like, maybe like even like a couple of F A Qs, like what is it, what does it help inform, you know, what do we use data for? And, you know, yeah, so people understand the takeaway, um. For that, that might be, thank you, Hillary, it's a.
Maybe even like saying like, we need your help, please come, like.
Right. Sometime, well, or free childcare, if there's, if there's a way that. And, and H S students or something, maybe do some kind of childcare.
Yeah, they have to do two hours a month of, uh, of community service, so it might be able to get them on a Saturday.
That's been hugely helpful with the town meetings as a single parent to have that free childcare in the cafeteria.
Those are all really good suggestions. I get nervous ju- just in COVID with childcare and things like that.
Right.
Let me talk with, uh, our team and the nurses and see what we can do, but great suggestions and absolutely, when we put it out. We will make sure we give sort of the overview and the explanation and I love the idea whoever said, um, Hillary or Elizabeth, just about asking for help, like we need you and this is why. To give it a little bit of hope, so thank you.
Thank you, alright, so I think that's, that's it, um, did I skip anybody?
Do we do the minutes? Well, I know there were a lot of comments.
Minutes, that's right, I always forget that, that they got moved to the, the end now, um. Um, so, Colleen, we're not doing any warrants, right, or?
There are three warrants, warrant five, six and seven.
Okay, um, so, without objection, I would move to accept. Um, approved warrants, two, two, oh, five, was it two, two, oh, oh, five? Two, two, oh, oh, six and two, two, oh, oh, seven, is that right? Alright, no objection, they are accepted, alright, and then minutes, um, I, I had one, um. Well, I had a couple of grammatical, but one was a little bit substantive, um. And that was for the seven twenty-two. Meeting minutes that we have. Looks like there were just some. Spacing, um. In a couple areas, misspelling, um, my lights just. Um, but the one substantive thing that I. Noted. Was about, when we're talking about the strategic planning. Subcommittee, I had put a suggestion in there, so it. It had, um. To instead say this, this subcommittee is in the, it's on page, what page am I on here? Two, page two. So it'd say this subcommittee will still have discussions around curriculum, period, and then although not underscored, made purvo, since the school committee. Has a vested interest in curriculum within the district, the strategic planning and sub curriculum, so it will report back with regular frequency. Such as through teacher presentations. I remember that was part of the discussion and I just wanted to make sure that was just captured. Um, that way, because that was. The consideration, right? There was like a, a map or something that was gonna be followed. I know this is really Jennifer, but, and, um. Left it some regular frequency, because I think it was not really firmed as how frequent it would happen, but we would get some, some presentations, is that? Suggestion, um, sound like? Okay to add in there for what we discussed and, and that, or?
The general content, but the, um, the wording sort of threw me off because I thought it sort of sounded like the strategic planning and curriculum sub. Committee would report to the school committee through teacher presentations.
That was my understanding too, Hillary, so. That wasn't my understanding too, Hillary, so, yeah.
Is it, so, okay, I guess what I was, so I guess what I wanted, was trying to say, or what I remember the discussion was that cuz, cuz the way it was worded was the subcommittee will have, will still have discussions around curriculum not under school committee purview. And then it kind of was like, they'll be ongoing, cuz it would be an interest, but I think what I remember was that there would be some calendar that would be reporting, like, there'd be, you know, presentations on different curriculum, is that not?
Yeah, but that, that I agree with, it was just the wording that I was thrown off by. Did you say something like vested interest in curriculum within the district? Such as like the strategic planning and curriculum subcommitting, reporting back with regular frequency and receiving through the teacher presentations.
Sure, I think our focus right now is on the, the, the vision and the mission and that, so we're not really looking at and correct me if I'm wrong, Elizabeth, but, so we'll be reporting back similarly to all the other subcommittees, we'll be reporting back to the whole committee.
But this is what we talked about then, though, so I, I, maybe that's changed, but these are minutes of what our discussions were at that time. Which, that's what I was trying to capture. That Jennifer
I just, maybe just leave out the part about teacher presentations. So we're done.
That's what I would recommend too.
But didn't, didn't we talk about that there would be like a calendar where we would get presentations?
Not under
Curriculum, curriculum, oh, so is that maybe that, I thought it was, since maybe Jennifer was speaking on, maybe that's what I understood that, okay.
So there is, there is a calendar that, that came as part of the
Curriculum
Right, as far as far as the superintendent's goals, there was a link with a calendar of, of different presentations, so maybe it kinda got muddied together.
Okay, so maybe she just talked about it in, in the context of curriculum, but not that it would be something that would be, got it.
Right, yeah, and it is, it's gonna take place, but it's under the superintendent's goals, cuz we all, we all got that calendar, the link.
Okay. Alright, so Colleen, I guess it sounds like if, just take out the such as through teacher presentation at the end, and everything else seems to be okay with is that right, from everybody, Hillary, Beth, Mary, that sounds about right? Alright, and then the other grammatical. So I guess I will make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes from July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one with the amended language regarding the strategic planning and curriculum subcommittee with the grammatical edits as indicated.
I can second.
Okay, any discussion? No, alright, roll call, Mary Branley?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths? I heard, I saw your mouth say yes, I didn't hear you. Okay. Natasha Rivera, yes, okay, motion carries. Alright, and, am I done? I think I'm done.
Yes.
Yes, alright, thank you all, sorry for fumbling through tonight, appreciate your patience. And I'll make a motion that we adjourn. Alright, roll call vote, Mary Branley?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera, yes, Brian, team, Wayne, everybody, thank you very much, Charles? Thank you. Thank you.